I guess we'll see what you see.
Uh huh.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The January 16, 2008 meeting of the City Council was called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. We make this announcement at every meeting. We tell everybody that we have a state of the art fire sprinkler system in the council chamber, so should alarms activate, please go outside and we'll have our marshals there and folks ready to tell you where to assemble. And we have no reason to believe that this would ever take place, but as a matter of caution, we make this announcement and the marshals will tell you when it's safe to re-enter the building, should that ever occur. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Robert Fowler, Victory Missionary Baptist Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Councilman Barlow, good to see you, council. Thank you. Would you bow with me, please? Eternal God, we thank you this morning for the privilege that we have. We thank you in the spirit of the prophets of old who recognize that every day, all of the health and all of the wealth that we possess has come from you. So we're grateful this day. We thank you for the privilege of being able to live it. We're grateful for the privilege of being able to live it in this city. We are praying this morning, God, for the officials who serve over our city, for your blessings upon their life. Thank you for their sacrifice and certainly thank you for their service. We pray, God, that you would watch over them with protection as well as provision. And we pray in the spirit of the wisest man living dead and unborn, that you would grant them wisdom as they adjudicate the matters of our city. We pray for their wisdom to serve our city today, to the end that their decisions will move us further toward peace and prosperity as a people. In the name of our Lord and Savior, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, how are you? Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda. And for a first start, we're going to recognize our January Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask Stephen Harson, who's our Director of Neighborhood Services, to join us at the podium. And I'm going to announce that the January Employee of the Month is Lynn Kerr. Lynn? Lynn is a caseworker with the Neighborhood Services Department and has been employed with the city since 2003. She works with the very successful Evolve program and works every day with individuals who are homeless or in jeopardy of being homeless. I have to say this, the Evolve program is something that's very special for the city of Las Vegas. We started it several years ago, and what we do is we go into the prison and we start working with folks who are going to be released so that when they come back into the community, they will be employed, they'll have a place to live, and they'll have support so they won't recidivize or go back into crime. And our record is really remarkable. I think we have about a 90% rate of stopping people from going back into prison, which saves everybody an awful lot of money and really makes the community a better place. And Lynn has been very special in that regard, working with those folks. In addition, she comes to our council meetings, and every once in a while, we have somebody from our homeless population come here. And we ask them whether or not we could be of service. And she is the one who will address their issues. She'll work with them, she'll get them into an agency, and make sure that they too have all the support that they need, so they'll also be productive citizens and have a quality of life which every one of us who live in this city yearn for. So that's just my two cents, okay? Lynn always finds a way to help these individuals using resources such as the Emergency Housing Assistance Program or other programs offered by the city or outside organizations. She takes a genuine interest in the individuals who come through the city asking for aid and treats everyone with dignity and respect. For many people, she makes a difference between them living in the street or having a roof over their heads. She does this on a daily basis and is an excellent example of how the city of Las Vegas is doing its part to help decrease the homeless population in the valley. On behalf of the entire City Council, we'd like to congratulate you on the name of the January 2008 Employee of the Month, and along with his plaque, Lynn, which is for you, there'll be a $100 Visa gift card. How do you like that? Compliments of the Nevada Federal Union, and I'm a little short after last week's football games, and I may just need an advance, okay? Thank you very much. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Lynn has been with the department since 2003, and she was actually one of the original staff persons to help the Evolve program get up and running. Her tireless efforts, her commitment, her dedication is truly unprecedented within our department. We could not be more proud of her. She has truly made a difference of helping people get off the street, getting into shelters, and in many cases reconnecting with their family. I know Lynn is not one to share the spotlight or likes the spotlight, but for this, we could not be more proud of you. And so with that, I'm going to let you say a few words.
Thank you. Well, I do appreciate this, but I have to tell you that I don't work in a void or a vacuum, and there are a lot of people who help me do this every day, and they're equally deserving of this kind of recognition, and I hope that you all remember that. Thanks again. And this is my mother, Bobby, who keeps me on track at all times.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. For our next two items, I'd like to ask Lance Malone, where are you, Lance? Lance Malone, I called you. You know, wait a second. That's what happens when you talk about the Evolve program. Oh, my goodness gracious, what a mayor this is. Forget about it. I'd like to ask Lance Marad, a member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, to join us. Lance will introduce us to the senior of the quarter as well as members of the Dula Center Senior Roundtable, whose members have been meeting for 20 years, I think he may have gotten 20 years, to discuss issues that affect seniors. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning. The Senior Citizens Advisory Board would ask, oops, would like to ask all of you who are watching today for a favor. Get a pencil, a paper, or a pen. I'll be back later on to tell you how to help us. This morning, we have a very special guest who is here to help honor the Dula Center. She would normally have the mic today, but Betty Evans has come. She's our chair. Thanks for coming, Betty. And also here, I noticed, thank you, Betty, Bill Bastian and Joyce Henderson from the Leisure Services are also here to lend their support to the roundtable. During the recent briefing, we were advised that the journal that goes to those who are in charge of leisure services seniors across the country has recognized the city of Las Vegas as one of the top five programs in the United States and Canada. And one of the reasons for that recognition is the Roundtable. It is a privilege and a pleasure for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board to recognize seniors who for the last 20 years met to continue their education and explore the issues which affect seniors. About 23 years ago, a young 73-year-old lady joined a senior aerobics class at the Bonanza Senior Center. The instructor soon after she joined retired, and the staff and the members of that class asked her to become the instructor. And so began a 13, more than a 13-year career as an instructor to seniors in an aerobics class where they really did cardio. Six days a week, 9:00 in the morning, she taught. That aerobics instructor was a star of the game. She is unable to be here this morning, but we obviously wish her well. I do because she's my mother. In the group of men that were also participating in this aerobics class was a very, very interesting gentleman. He had the personality to pull off the following. Every Wednesday morning, he encouraged and invited those seniors in the aerobics class to go next door to the Dula Center and lay in. He also imposed a 25-cent fine for every pound that the seniors gained. And of course, that gave him a little money for refreshments. He also invited occasionally people to come in and talk about health issues. He served for many years as the leader, the sometimes president, the court jester, organized events, stepped in when things weren't going real well. He's a, well, he is, he's Mr. Roundtable. New Goldstein, stand up and be recognized, please. Thank you. And of course, there were many volunteers, those who served as president and on the executive board. And typical of those people who volunteered are Fran Curry, who has collected money, and Mary Swan, who's made coffee on a really regular basis. They need to be, well, they're not the only ones, but they are typical of the volunteerism that takes place. You know, you have to have volunteers to keep this going. The director of the Dula Center has for almost 20 years mentored, coached, been the city's liaison. She recognized that this group of people needed some city support. She's a very special lady, and those of you who attended the 50th anniversary of the Dula Center during our centennial celebration knows that she puts on a great party, great entertainment, and had an historical display that's unbelievable. Marilyn Laddan is a very special lady. She has a very special gift. And that gift is compassion. That compassion has extended to virtually every member of Roundtable. You know, seniors have their challenges, and she's not only serves our seniors, but she's their friend. Marilyn Laddan, where are you? Stand up. There's a very special lady who's an original member of the Roundtable. 75 years of professional entertainer, still got a great set of pipes, but she's really known as a solo tap dancer. She only practices six days a week. She and a group of Las Vegas senior tappers recently visited Nashville, Tennessee. They received a special invitation to appear with the regulars on the stage of the Grand Old Opry. Not only did they appear there, but word got out that they were in Nashville and other venues kept them busy for four days. She's a former Miss Senior Nevada, a great ambassador for the city of Las Vegas, only 72-years-young Kitty Lardy, stand up. 92, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. She's only 92-years-young. Why does it say 72 while you look at her? That was a real Freudian slip, but it worked well. For the past year, the president of Roundtable has been Bob Lardy. He and his officers have revised the bylaws, set up bank accounts, filed papers with the state and the federal government, and has assured the continuation of his group. Bob Lardy, come up. We have a certificate of recognition for the Roundtable. Nice big hand for Bob. Okay. And now, and now for you who are listening at home with that pencil and paper. Take down this phone number, 229-6681. That's Maria Castillo Couch's phone number, Maria's enough, 229-6681. She has a very short form of nomination for senior of the quarter. We need to find seniors so that we can recognize them for their contribution to the city of Las Vegas. Las Vegas residents, 229-6681, give Maria a call. Thank you. And now to the senior of the quarter. You can tell from some of the descriptions that Roundtable has any number of people who would make great seniors of the quarter. But Martha Walters got one of those easy-to-fill-out forms and nominated the following person. She started her career as a school teacher in a one-room schoolhouse. Married 62-years-old, three children. One of her boys returned to the hometown and became a teacher and a coach. The football stadium's named after him. The granddaughter, her name's on a celebrity golf tournament. Another son joined the state troopers and retired as lieutenant, became the state farm marshal, retired, just last year retired as a college professor, and a third son has the largest distribution company of its kind. She and her husband retired, came to Las Vegas, and "find a need and fill it" really describes this lady. An 11-year volunteer in hospitals, no one knows how many hours. She found a school with economically challenged parents. We don't know how many years she volunteered, every week to go into a third-grade classroom, mentor the children, and teach them reading. She's notorious in her church for volunteerism. You don't have to be a Catholic to volunteer for Catholic social services. Every morning, she calls five, six, seven seniors who live alone. When she gets off the phone, you know they're smiling. When Southwest Gas needed volunteers for the senior program to help with utilities, she was there wrapping the hot water heaters. If you're her friend, you know she anticipates what you need. She's a plus-size lady in a petite body. It's our pleasure. Joe Lardy, come right up. Now, ladies and gentlemen, in the audience today from Michigan and Texas are two of her sons and three of her daughter-in-laws. Come on down. She didn't have a clue. Take a look at this. Congratulations, Joe Lardy.
Wow.
It's your family.
I can't believe it. Oh, my goodness.
He just called me.
I don't believe it.
Congratulations.
I love Las Vegas. We moved out here in January 15, 1981. On January 16, 1981, I was over to the Las Vegas Center. I spent all those six days here for this show. Thank you. Thank you.
Here we go. Richie, could you take that over?
Right up. Right, and.
I think, yeah, I love that. With your family. Yeah, can the family come back so we can have a picture taken? Please? That's good. Here we go. That's great. Yeah. That's great. There it is, that's good. That's wonderful. Okay, now you're taking out for a nice dinner now, right? Make sure you get a nice dinner out of these guys. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lance, we really appreciate it. For our final item, we have a very special presentation. To help in making this presentation, I'd like to ask our Deputy City Manager Steve Houghton and Matt Hodgson, Vice President of Construction for Polty Homes, to join us at the podium. Mr. Hodgson? Thank you. As many of you know, sustainability has become one of our key initiatives in the city. Through city policies and programs, we are ensuring that our wonderful quality of life is preserved for future generations through green building. And to promote green building in Las Vegas, the city created its own green building program, which was developed in collaboration with the Southern Nevada Green Building Partnership the Southern Nevada Green Building Partnership. And we'd like to recognize Connie Suckling. Is Connie here? Good, come on up, Connie, please. And Monica Caruso, Monica, please come up, representing the Green Building Partnership with the city. The Green Building Program encourages home builders and developers to build innovative green homes and neighborhoods that are more energy-efficient, environmentally-friendly, and sustainable for our city's quality of life today and tomorrow. The city's happy to announce that model homes at the Pulte Homes Timber Creek subdivision are the first participants with the city's green building program. The homes in this subdivision will exceed the city's energy and water conservation requirements, include a quantifiable volume of renewable and recycled materials, and educate homeowners about green building and the value and benefits it brings to our city. So on behalf of the entire city council, we congratulate you on this great accomplishment, and thank you. And we'd like to present you with this proclamation and proudly proclaim today, January 16, as Pulte Homes Timber Creek Day in the city of Las Vegas. And I know that Catherine Ross and myself will be coming out to an event. Is it tomorrow, Catherine? Tomorrow. And we're taking one of our sustainable orders from our fleet. We're going to use a hydrogen car, and we're going to drive out there without the use of any type of gasoline. We're going to make it all the way out there, and then run out of hydrogen and have to hitchhike back. But no, no, just kidding. No, it's able to go that far back. Although, we are working on a program to get these cars in a way that they'll be able to travel all the way from California to Albuquerque, going through Phoenix and Las Vegas. That's one of the programs that the city's involved in right now as far as our energy program. So we'll see you out there tomorrow, but in the meantime, here's the mic.
Well, thank you, city council. I appreciate your recognition. And I also like to thank the Southern Nevada Home Builders Office, as well as Energy Sense, for helping us achieve this. It's in Pulte's eyes we would like to be the leader in green building, knowing that that is our future to help our environment. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
It gives me great pleasure to be able to recognize Pulte Homes for this contribution to our green building program. We celebrate sustainability in the city of Las Vegas in a number of ways, but we believe that the, the, what am I trying to say here? We believe that the programs that we put together will help make this city a better place, a more beautiful place, for those who follow after us. And so with this, I again thank Pulte Homes, and also encourage other development concerns that might have an interest in green building to come and check out the city of Las Vegas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. There we go. Good. No, the idiot wasn't here for the argument. And for the folks over at the center, I want to tell you that on January the 26th, excuse me, folks, on January the 26th, at between nine and 12, we're going to have a Feel Great in '08 Health Fair out at the Centennial Hills Community Center. So that's at 6601 North Buffalo Drive. Councilman Ross will be there, members of the council will be there. It's being sponsored by him and Cox Communications. So please consider coming out there. That's Saturday, January 26, from nine to 12, at the Centennial Hills Community Center. Thanks. You're welcome.
You got to elaborate on the contest?
Oh.
Weight loss challenge.
Oh, that's very good. And there will be a weight loss challenge between Councilman Ross, Councilman Brown, and Clark County Commissioner Chip Maxfield. Watch them weigh in.
And others are welcome.
And others are welcome as well. All right, folks, we'll call item number nine on our regular agenda. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held medallions to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, your honor. We have item number thirteen as a special event alcoholic beverage license. Beauty Bar, 517 Fremont Street, staff says to strike. Item forty-seven is a temporary approval of new martial arts instruction license, 7660 West Giant Avenue, staff says to strike. Item forty-nine is temporary approval of a change of ownership for a package licensed, 311 South Main Street, staff says to strike. And item fifty-nine, 200764, staff says to strike. Are there any other items needing to be forward at this time, your honor? Hearing none, I'll make the most of any item forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number ten is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of December the 19th, 2007. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Yes, your honor. No addition or deletion. I make motion to approve the minutes, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Items eleven through thirty-eight on their consent agenda are considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, mayor.
Yes, Councilor Borla.
You said eleven through...
Eleven through thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. I would like to pull forward item number twelve.
All right.
And item number twenty.
All right. Any others from the council? All right, Mr. Vincent?
Your honor, Mark Vincent, Director of Finance and Business Services. I need to pull forward item eighteen to make a correction.
All right, very good. So we have twelve, eighteen, and twenty. All right. Mayor Potem?
Yes, your honor. I make motion to approve items eleven through thirty-eight with the acceptance of twelve, thirteen, eighteen, and twenty.
Twelve, eighteen, and twenty.
Yeah, and thirteen, which we're taking action on. Bring those other items forward, take the appropriate action, and I move for approval, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries.
No, twelve, twenty, and eighteen.
Twelve, twenty, and eighteen, that's right. Right. Okay, that's strict. Oh, I got you. I'm with you 100%. Thank you. All right, we'll call item number twelve. Item twelve is approval of a special event alcoholic beverage license for Aspho Testfay Vegas Banquet LLC. The location is 2360 Martin Luther King Boulevard. The date is February the 3rd, 2008. It's a special event general event Super Bowl party, and the responsible person in charge is Aspho Testfay in Ward Five. Councilor Borla.
Yes, mayor, thank you. Is Jim DeFiore here?
Mr. DeFiore.
Mr. DeFiore, would you please approach the microphone, please? Do we have any background information as far as the Super Bowl party in relation to security and who's going to be in attendance, what have you? Because I have concern as it relates to this corner. I had Cary Martin Luther King, being that it's, you know, a lot of activity that has taken place over the years at this corner. And I just want to make sure that we have the proper security in place and make sure that if in fact we're going to move forward with the Super Bowl party, which I do support, and I support Mr. Testfay, but I just want to make sure that I go on the record, knowing that we have all those measures in place for the safety and security of the residents in the surrounding area.
I don't have that information in front of me today, but I do believe that they have indicated that they were going to have security, and we certainly can make that a condition on the approval of this license if you wish to do that.
Yes, I would like to make that as amended, to have additional security for the sake of the residents in the community, making sure that this is, this event goes on without any problems.
Very good.
Okay? So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval as amended.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is eighteen. Item eighteen is approval of agreement number 080146-DC Professional Services Agreement for the Desert Nature Preserve Project located on Wallaby Way, north of Alta Drive, Department of Public Works. Award recommended to Hill, Clark, and Associates for $3,708,750 Park and Leisure Activities Capital Projects Fund, and this is in Ward Two. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, your honor, Mark Vincent, again. And the confusion of the holidays, or the excitement of the holidays, confusion of our back-to-back meetings, we've got the wrong dollar amount here. The $3,708,750 is actually the total construction cost. This design contract is actually for $284,900. So the number...
$284,900?
$284,900. And so the number in the subject, the fiscal impact, and the recommendation should be changed to $284,900.
All right, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
I don't know.
It's in your ward.
Okay. My motion is for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty is approval of award of bid number 07.1730.05-LED Martin Luther King Boulevard improvements, Alta Drive to Cary Avenue, and Construction Conflicts and Contingency Reserve set by Finance and Business Services, Department of Public Works. The award has been recommended to Wells Cargo Inc. in the amount of $24,159,146.55 from our Road and Flood Capital Projects Fund. This is in Ward Five. Councilor Borla?
Yes, mayor. I would like to ask for Department head, Mr. Charlie Kukaske, to please approach Good morning, Charlie.
Good morning.
Charlie, would you please give us an update as to the timeline for the Martin Luther King expansion?
Yes. We anticipate having a notice to proceed for the contractor on March 8th of this year. It is a 20-month construction period. With that, we would anticipate completion of the project November of next year, 2009. We have a lot of utility underground work. Some of the power lines are going underground, plus a relocation of utilities, storm drain, landscaping. And so the underground work will be the first order of business towards the south end of the project on the west side. And then as we complete the underground, we'll go into paving and then move on to the other side of the street.
And what is the timeline, once again, as far as the completion of that?
We'll start March this year and finish November of next year. Twenty months.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update.
Okay.
Okay. With that, mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll go to our administrative part of the agenda. Item number thirty-nine, this is a report from our city manager, Dr. Selby, on emerging issues. Dr. Selby?
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
Just a few items for you between today and February 6th of your next council meeting. I want to remind everybody that the state of Nevada is hosting presidential caucuses this Saturday. I mention this because many of these will be held in city facilities. So the city's facilities are being utilized by the parties for those caucuses. We're not sponsoring them or otherwise providing any kind of support. Anybody interested in those caucuses should consult their political parties. Because of the caucuses, the annual Martin Luther King Day Parade will be held actually on Martin Luther King Day, on the holiday of January 21st, at 10:00 a.m. in downtown Las Vegas. Like always, it will follow the downtown parade route of Fourth Street from Gas to Fremont. The parade is one of our largest ones, and we encourage everybody to come out and enjoy it. It's a great event. And because of the Martin Luther King Day holiday, the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st. And finally, our annual Teen Town Hall, very popular event, will be held here at the city of Las Vegas. It'll be broadcast live on Channel Two. It will be held Thursday, January 21st.
31st.
31st, I'm sorry. Thank you, David. And that concludes my report, mayor.
All right, very good. Thank you, Dr. Selby. Are there any questions or comments at this time? All right, thank you for the report. We appreciate it. Item number forty is a report and possible action related to Las Vegas Strategic Plan Priority Number Four concerning, quote, "aggressively attract and retain diverse businesses," end quote, and Priority Six concerning, quote, "provide an open government which allows access, participation, and respectful communication," end quote. Mr. Adams?
Good morning. Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. What I'm going to present to you this morning is exactly the same four indicators that I presented to you a year ago that really get at the economic health of the city as it relates to one of your strategic priorities. Those four are business license rate, the rate at which we attract and form businesses, our RDA tax base, the land area and the portion of land area in the city devoted to residential versus non-residential use, and then household income. The first indicator is that a business licenses issued, and because of the period in which we're reporting at this specific time of year, the 2008 numbers that you see on your screen are projections. And the real thing to get focused on is the bottom line, the total number of active business licenses that we're experiencing in the city. And if you look back through 2005 all the way up through the projection for 2008, you're seeing a very smooth increase in the number of business licenses. In a number of older cities throughout America, you see tremendous business outmigration. This is clearly an indicator that our businesses continue to want to form here, come into the city, and they stay. And this is consistent with information that we've been getting in the Office of Business Development from our business retention program that shows that our businesses are in the 90% range in terms of their satisfaction of doing business in the city of Las Vegas. So all the policies that you put in place as a council have really come home in terms of providing a very high-quality, attractive environment for the formation of businesses. The next one is the RDA tax base. At a very high level, this is an indicator of the economic health of the core, the urban core of the city. This is a number that's reported at this specific, same specific time each of these years. It's the amount of dollars that we've collected during the period from August through November. If you see, in 2006, we're at 5.2, 2007, 7.8 million. And at the same period going into this fiscal year, we're at about 10.3 million. So very dramatic increases in the tax increment dollars being realized to the redevelopment area, which is a good indicator of the economic health of the core area. Again, many cities around the United States, especially in the Rust Belt, that are struggling, are seeing economic outmigration, and those numbers would be negative. This is an indicator that really, really gets at how much of our land, and again, the real indicator here is the proportion of residential versus non-residential land. I think one of the things we were tracking here was how much of our land is devoted to residential versus non-residential use. Clearly, if we continue to allocate more and more land to residential, our ability to attract businesses, to create land for commercial zoning and development and enterprise would be limited. But as you can see, especially over this last one-year period, we've seen a fairly significant jump in terms of the significant jump in terms of the non-residential portion of land in, in the city. We went from nineteen point one percent of non-residential occupied land to twenty point five percent, and the amount of vacant land decrease that's devoted to right-of-ways and, and vacant land use. So that's another positive indicator that the proportion of commercially developed or land available for that is increasing, which is another positive indicator in the total city. Clearly, that's been an issue in, in southern Nevada, in the entire metropolitan area. As we bumped into the edges of the, the mountains, our ability to bring non-residential land into the marketplace to promote industrial and other types of development is diminishing. So as a city, we're heading in the right direction in terms of being able to keep the appropriate balance between residential and non-residential use. A lot of communities become bedroom communities, where they basically virtually become mostly residential use, and their ability to attract tax base and jobs becomes very limited. And then the final indicator, and this was one that I have to admit, last year you were most concerned about, because if you look at the statistics, we were tracking per capita income and median household income that you saw from 2004 to 2005, in particular on per capita income, when adjusted for inflation, we were flat. But going into 2006, we're seeing a fairly healthy increase in per capita income, which means the proportion of residents who are enjoying higher wage incomes is increasing. This is also consistent with some numbers that we're seeing in a regional economic base study that's being done by the Regional Planning Coalition that shows that the proportion of office versus other uses in the valleys increasing. And so this would be, those indicators are consistent. As we increase the proportion of our economic base devoted to office use, you would expect that household income would go up with that as well, because typically, those kinds of jobs pay a higher wage than non, non-office-type employment. So again, this is a good statistic in terms of the economic health of the community, that as we grow and expand our business base, our residents are enjoying an increasing income as a result of that expansion.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
May I ask Scott a question?
Sure, please.
I think I heard you right, Scott. Did you say that the information you've received countywide is consistent with this-
That's correct, and, and these are numbers for the city, per U.S. Census, mid, mid-census estimates. They do surveys where they can start to track this information, and what you do is you tend to make, when you look, you can't get too hung up on these individual statistics, other than as high-level indicators, but you do look at other statistics that you've experienced to reinforce and support these high-level indicators. And clearly, the things that we're seeing in other statistics support the notion that our, our incomes are increasing, because we are, as a valley, and the city, sharing in that diversifying our economic base, albeit slowly, but we are, to more office and, and professional-related employment. So those are the four indicators. We're going to stay consistent with these same four until we get into the Performance Plus Program, they may change, but at this point, we wanted to stay consistent with the same information we presented to you last year.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments to Mr. Adams? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Scott, starting on that first page, two questions. One is, the retention program that you've established, briefly touch on that, what kind of outreach we do, or what we offer as far as the, the business interaction?
We've been running that program now for over three years. It's a fairly quiet program, it's, we advertise it on our website. We have outreach to businesses two ways, one primary way, we send surveys to, we have so many business licenses, we can't touch every business in the city, so we have to be very strategic about how we do it. We survey select businesses, we started the largest employers, and then we started pulling out select types of employers, ones that we clearly would not want to lose as employers, especially as it relates to diversity in the city. Some, for example, casinos, we wouldn't necessarily, we're in the early phases of the program, so they're not going to move, they're not going to pick up and move, but a business that is in leased space can easily pick up and move somewhere else. So those are the kinds of businesses that we call, that we survey. We send them a survey form, and then in certain ones, followed up with face-to-face visits. Over the life of the program, we've surveyed thousands of businesses, and then yielded a return to where we're probably, and I, right off the top of my head, we're probably around a thousand businesses that we've actually made physical contact in some way, shape, or form. And as a result of the responses we got from these businesses, they indicate to us, there's a survey form where we ask them, do you like doing business in the city? What things do you like about us, what do you don't like about us, and then we've been able to pull that into summaries. And we have a very, very high satisfaction rate in the city here. I think it's approaching ninety-five percent, which is incredible for a city, that they, it's probably an indication of, of the infrastructure here, that they like doing business with the city, they like being in the city, and it's also probably a very strong indicator of the health of the, of the regional economy, that this is a great place to do business.
I ask that, and if you've sent the report, it's somewhere in my office, but I think we should share that information, especially the responses we receive. I'm sure that my colleagues up here, we get comments from businesses, new and existing, positive to the city or negative, but if we can share some of that information that you're receiving-
Sure.
Personally, I'd be better, better prepared to say, these are the type of things that we do with our business community. So I would encourage you to share that information.
I'll pull another summary of that together and get that to each of you.
Thank you, are there any other comments?
No, I'm-
Oh, you're not, yeah. Well, I thought you were through, I'm sorry. I mean, I wish you would speak a little faster.
Okay, then I'll, I'll stop there.
No, no, please. Go for it.
I'll stop there.
Is that a seriously?
No, I'll pass on page two. Page three.
The resident, the land use?
The acreage, yeah. If, just for clarification, if we have, perhaps in Councilman Ross's area, some of the master plan communities that have been entitled in the city but have not begun development, where are they reflected on the inventory?
That's a good question. I would have to get that information, get that back through. This is, as we've been able to get it from the planning department, the, the question I have is, in my own mind, is this zoning versus actual land use, and I would need to get that clarification.
I appreciate that, and you mentioned the term, the balance of residential and non-residential. Statistically, is there a percentage that the industry looks towards as far as that appropriate balance?
Not really, I think we're looking at more of a trend issue there. Clearly, if we were adding more and more and more residential, we would have a diminishing inability to, to attract and create jobs. I'm not sure there's an ideal balance that's published that I'm aware of.
And then finally, Your Honor, finally, on the last page, the overall information on this per capita, do we break that down even further? Would we be able to address the highest five percent income versus the lowest five? Does it get into that kind of detail beyond just the median household incomes?
We may be able to get that stratification. Is it by geographic area you're referring to, or by-
Citywide, and, and I mentioned to the mayor when you were talking about this, what, what we seem to be hearing in the media is the squeezing and the pressing and the pressure put on the middle class, and if we could better define-
Sure.
-in the city, we may see a trend that perhaps our middle class is doing better than the norm nationally, but what about our lower income or, or higher income? How are they impacted by some of the numbers in comparison? I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll try to get that information.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vincent, I don't want to catch you unawares here, but perhaps you could answer this question. This is a very positive report, of course, as far as retaining businesses and increasing businesses in our community. How does the city of Las Vegas, if at all, benefit from having a business succeed within our boundaries as far as revenue derived from it?
In many ways, obviously, they, they certainly pay license fees to us and, and other permit fees, but the success of a business in terms of employment, I mean, the secondary, tertiary impacts of having the employment base is tremendous. Those people buy goods and services, they pay sales tax, they either own property or rent property that pays property taxes, and I mean, it is, it's significant. The economic, the, the per capita and median household income numbers were intriguing to me, because that's a particular area that bond raters have always criticized Las Vegas at, when they look at, look at us, they say, our, in the past, they've said, our, our median household income is too low to warrant higher upgrades than we have gotten in the past. So it is also a wonderful indicator, see that the median household income, per capita income is also rising as well, that'll help us also in the future with our ratings. But in practically every way imaginable, having businesses to, to employ folks is very good for us.
Very good.
It's very important to have happy businesses, happy, successful businesses.
Pretty remarkable statistics in light of the subprime influences taking place, too, that these new businesses are coming in, and people are making more money than they have in the past. That's very good news. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Good report. Mr. Riggleman?
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. For the record, I'm Communications Director David Riggleman. I'm joined by Information Technologies Director Joe Marcella and Human Resources Director Claudette Enos. We are here to report to you our progress on strategic priority number six, that's the one related to providing a more open government. You'll recall that we were before you a year ago, and since then, what's changed is that we've added a new global or more holistic survey of our city's communications efforts. As you know, we've been able to measure specific areas of our communication, things like viewership on Channel Two or visits to the city, city's website, but we wanted to take a more overarching view of how we're doing as an organization. A new survey gives us more of that insight, and what we'd like to do is give you a synopsis of those results, as well as look at our more traditional communications efforts. Mayor, all of that information is compiled for you in a short, five-minute video, so with your permission, if we could play that video now, we'll, we'll present you those results.
Roll it.
Thanks, guys. In our 21st century world, information travels fast in ways most of us never imagined even a few years ago. Keeping pace with these technological miracles is at the heart of one of the city's key strategic initiatives, to provide an environment where citizens have easy access to city information, but can also communicate with the city. This two-way communication or dialogue is reflected in the city's strategic plan as Priority Six, to provide an open government which allows access, participation, and respectful communication. Since we reported to you a year ago, the city continues to show strong leadership in all areas of the communication field. For example, our website was named one of the top three city sites in the nation by the Center for Digital Government. Our annual report won a first-place national award in the City County Communications and Marketing Association. The city team employing newsletter won a second and third place in two separate national competitions, and the city's TV station, KCLV Channel Two, won no less than eleven national and regional honors, including six first-place awards. But while winning awards is nice, what Las Vegas residents think of our communications is really what matters. For the first time, the city commissioned a comprehensive survey in 2007 to get a clearer picture of how we're feeling overall. Just over four hundred Las Vegas residents were randomly sampled by phone. We found almost sixty percent had some type of previous communication with the city. Phone calls made up the highest percentage of contacts, followed by in-person visits, then email, visiting the website, standard mail, and finally, other means. The results are encouraging. Of those who communicated with the city in some way, fifty-seven percent have a positive evaluation of the city's services and had a favorable impression of the staff's courtesy. Of those who communicated with the city most recently, twenty-four percent gave the city a very good rating, while another forty-five percent rated the city as good. Thirteen percent had a negative impression. When asked if the city's overall communications were effective and clear, sixty-three percent had a positive impression, thirty-four percent a negative evaluation. Statistics like these and others will help establish a benchmark so we can improve our communications with the public in the future. At the same time, we continue to monitor those communication tools we've been tracking for some time. For instance, we did another annual viewer survey for KCLV Channel Two. About five hundred Las Vegas residents who subscribe to Cox Cable were randomly contacted by phone. The key performance indicators are awareness, viewership, and satisfaction. Of those surveyed, about one-half are aware of the government access stations by channel number. Of those aware of the government channels, more than half watch KCLV on a regular basis. And of those who watch KCLV, about ninety percent continue to say the programming is good, very good, or excellent. For the website, we also note that the number of people using the online services continues to climb dramatically. These interactive uses include a host of activities like paying fees online, attending traffic school, scheduling a building inspection, or submitting a request for any kind of city service. In fact, seventy percent of city business can be handled online over the Internet. Obviously, more than a few people know that. As you can see, online business transactions have jumped over the last three years. At the same time, the revenue collected has shot up fivefold. Another impressive change concerns the city's public meeting agendas. In September 2006, the city launched the first online application in the state that gives the public a chance to view all parts of the city council or planning committee agenda, and even watch the items all from your own computer. Visits to these features have increased from about thirty thousand per month to over one hundred and fifty thousand. All told, our recent survey showed that nine out of ten visitors to our website found what they were looking for. The use of the city's combined online and phone system has also up dramatically over the last three years, climbing some seventy-five percent. Requests for service that were logged and resolved jumped from about fifty-four thousand to over ninety thousand per year. These statistics show a strong commitment to customer service, but they also show the city's leadership in other key initiatives such as wellness, diversity, and sustainability. Sustainability is the concept that we want to protect the quality of life we enjoy today, but at the same time, do it in a way that protects the quality of life for future generations. We know we save resources and protect the environment when we communicate effectively, because it can mean our residents can take fewer trips in the car to city halls to do business. Strong communication also means convenience for the public, who saves time and increases the chances people will participate in city programs, such as those that help them become more fit. And we want to make everyone feel included. Our survey shows we serve a diverse population, so we're making a concerted effort to reach out through things like Spanish language programming on KCLV, and by providing translations to twelve languages on the city website. People of the 21st century expect to find information quickly and easily, and our goal is to make sure that especially holds true when communicating with the city of Las Vegas.
Very nice.
Thank you. With that, Mayor, we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Very nice presentation, short and sweet, right to the point, real good. And it shows that we're doing a good job, but there's plenty of room for improvement. Very good. All right, are there any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. David, great presentation, great video. Thank you, folks, as well. You handed us all these booklets today, and could I ask you to look at page five? I have a question about page five. We're talking about the KCLV viewership by race, ethnicity, and we've got percentages there, and obviously, well, the highest percentage is, is white, at, what is that, about eighty percent or seventy-eight percent, David?
That responded to the survey, yes.
Okay, so that chart there, if you will, on page five, indicates the breakdown of people who responded to the survey.
Yes.
Obviously, our minority communities responded much less than the white people did. Why is that? I mean, I think we're at about twenty-five percent valley-wide Hispanic, and certainly other minorities have a significant population here. Why was the response for the minorities so low?
Councilman, I really can't answer that, other than sometimes respondents may identify themselves as one race or another, that's a potential means there. I don't know why that, that information or that number would be a little bit lower, it's hard to say. It's, again, the, the phone calls are made on a random basis, and they'll continue calling until they can get four hundred respondents. That gives them a statistically valid survey, so that we know that the, the margin of error is as low as it possibly can be. So why only that many chose to respond, it's hard to say.
Okay. My only observation would be that perhaps next time we reach out a little bit farther to make sure we get a better representative of our diversity.
I think one thing that that survey does show, Councilman, is that the numbers of people who are watching- people who are watching Channel Two, even though the number of respondents, as you say, is lower than the population that we know the population to be, you can see that viewership is actually higher there.
I did see that. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilor Ross.
Thank you. Mr. Riggleman, the phone calls, the four hundred phone calls that were made, how was that broken up? Was that just computer-generated?
They had to be residents of the city of Las Vegas, Councilman. That was the first priority. The second thing is that the person who responded had to be eighteen years old or older in the household, and they had to be a responsible individual in the household. In other words, they had to be someone who could make decisions in the household, such as a mom or a dad, as opposed to maybe a nineteen-year-old son or daughter that might be living at home.
But it wasn't broken down by zip codes or anything like that?
It's done randomly, Councilman, but it was spread across the entire city of Las Vegas.
Okay. I think what Councilman Wilson was trying to get at was a more diverse response to the survey.
Certainly, we didn't target certain neighborhoods. It was looked at globally. But again, it comes down to who is going to answer the telephone. Councilman, I know they make far more than four hundred calls. They make about three or four times that to get four hundred people to respond.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much for the report. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to approve and accept both reports from Mr. Riggleman and his crew, and Mr. Adams.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item forty-one is Report and Possible Action on the 2008 Federal Legislative Agenda. Will Levis.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and council. For the record, Ted O'Levis, Director of Government and Community Affairs. I'm here to give you a brief overview of our 2008 federal agenda. The plan, as you know, is the result of discussions that we've had with all of you, as well as the city manager's office and all the directors and their departments. Its structure is similar to what we've had in the past, and it covers our 2009 appropriation requests, our legislative issues, public lands, other legislative topics of interest, and a summary of our 2008 appropriation requests. As you know, this is the document that Bal Janik and specifically Vicki Cram and I use when we're lobbying the federal delegates and their staff members. Vicki Cram, of course, is in Washington, D.C., and lobbies on our behalf on a day-to-day basis. It also is a guide for the federal delegates and their staffers, so they know how the mayor and council feel on certain federal legislative issues. As you probably heard during last night's presidential debate, there was certainly discussion about energy dependence, alternate fuels, and sustainability. Three of five of our appropriation requests align with those very important topics. So this is kind of timely that we're having these type of requests. The first being a half a million dollars for some plug-in hybrid technology for our city's fleet. That is in Tab Three of the document that you have. As you know, we're a leader in the use of alt fuels in our fleet, and we just received a World Leadership Award for these efforts. This furthers those efforts. This will allow us to do one of two things. One, either convert four to six of our current fleet vehicles to this technology, or potentially purchase three to five production model units. The second request is a million dollars for the prevention and investigation of copper wire theft. It's been a huge problem within the city of Las Vegas. That is in Tab Four of the document that you have. In 2007, we spent about that much money trying to prevent those thefts, and this money will be used to defray those costs. If you look at the document before you under Tab Four, you can see some examples and some pictures of city crews replacing stolen copper wire and what it actually looks like, and it really depicts the problem that we're having in our community. We're also asking for eleven million dollars to help fund the construction of the Kyle Canyon Interchange at US 95. This is a twenty-eight million dollar project. That is under Tab Five. In Tab Six, we are asking for a million dollars to develop a sustainable neighborhood pilot program, and this money would allow us to create a program to go into low-income neighborhoods, perform a home inspection and energy audit, look at things like insulation and ventilation, lighting, windows, kind of A to Z review of the property, and identify opportunities to retrofit, repair, or replace a certain things to make them more energy-efficient, of course. This will reduce their dependence on energy, increase, of course, the sustainability, and foster a sense of pride in the community. Our final request is a half a million dollars to develop an urban forestry program. We're the largest city in the West Coast without this type of a program. We thought that by adding trees and vegetation, it'll increase the sustainability and mitigate the urban heat island while improving air quality. If you look at Tab Seven, there are some examples of communities where there are trees and vegetation. And in fact, on the second page, it shows a visual disparity of a community that has very little vegetation versus one that has a lot of vegetation. We need to get some of that vegetation in those areas that are lacking in our community. The next section of the plan, Section Eight, identifies our legislative issues. These are current topics. They range from climate change to telecommunications, to our concern with the FAA on the right turn issue, and it's kind of an A to Z summary of those important topics that are going on back in Washington. The next section, Tab Nine, talks about our federal lands program, and that was put together by Chris Knight, our Director of Admin Services. That identifies priorities such as our support of the passage of the Nevada Cancer Institute Expansion Act, the support of possible amendments to the existing disposal boundaries of the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, our support of potential legislation to allow for the sale and development of lands associated with the Las Vegas Paiute Indian Tribe Reservation, our support of amending the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act to promote the development of affordable housing, and our support for the authorization to use public-private partnerships to manage our facilities located on lands acquired through the RMPP process and the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. The final section of interest here is our legislative topics, which is Tab Ten, and that's just kind of the A to Z listing of all the other things that we're interested in hearing about relative to legislative activity that's going on in those topics. And finally, in Tab Eleven, there is a summary that's provided that tells you how we did on our fiscal year 2008 appropriation requests. We received two hundred thousand dollars for the post office. We received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Sheep Mountain Parkway Environmental Impact Statement. We received three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for Evolve, and a hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for our Batteries Included Youth Initiative. As you recall, last year, we did request a million and a half dollars for a sustainability program. The intent of that was to let our federal delegates know that sustainability is an issue and a top priority of the city of Las Vegas. It was intended to try to consolidate all of the efforts that we know are going on within the city into one master program, but we did not receive any money for that. We also did not receive money for our Regional Public Safety Complex. We asked for fifteen million dollars for that. We did not get that, but there was a fifteen million dollar grant program that was established through Senator Reed's office that will allow us to compete for some of that money. And this plan, of course, is something that we're going to be talking with our federal delegates next week about, subject to your approval, and we're going to be talking about those things, trying to get some of that EOC money, and talking about the things that are in this plan. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mayor, for your time.
Mr. Levis, would it be possible to contact Congress Lady Berkeley? I have, the mayor and I have had contact with her over helping get a spending for the addition to Circle Park, the Veterans Memorial. She was very excited about us doing something like this. We do have some renderings of what it would look like if she needs some of that, and needs some copies of those. So if we could, above and beyond this, could we request a million dollars from her?
I will absolutely do that.
We'll take what we can get.
And her husband could write a check if he can't get it from the appropriations. Just kidding, Shelley. Not kidding, Shelley. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
It's okay.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Ted, in Tab Nine, where you provide the proposals, I'd like to talk about the Nevada Cancer Institute Expansion Act. I think, Betsy, you gave me an update a couple, a few days ago. Could you give me the latest update, or does this give me the latest update, what's in this tab?
I think I should probably defer to Chris about this. I believe this is the latest information, but we want to make sure that we're clearly up to date.
Good morning, Chris Knight, Director of Admin Services. Councilman, we've had some conversations with some of our congressional delegation that just before they went into recess, they had just about arrived at the negotiations on that bill. There were still some questions that Congressman Grahalba had, who's the chairman of the Natural Resources Subcommittee of the House, in relation to some concerns that BLM had, and there were some minor negotiations yet. I think they were in relation to the commercial properties that we're looking at on that site to support the Nevada Cancer Institute. And I was told that when they get back into session, and I believe that's the middle of next month, I think, I'm not sure, that there should be progress made on that bill. But as it stands, we don't have, we haven't, we've had the hearing, and we haven't had the bill marked up from the hearing yet, but it may move forward.
Certainly, I know you understand that I'm very, very concerned about this. This would be a fantastic addition to the Las Vegas Valley, the city of Las Vegas. It's a plan for a project in my ward. I'd like to thank, obviously, our congressional delegation. But just please communicate to Senator Enson and Congresswoman Berkeley if there's anything that the city of Las Vegas can do to forward our efforts. Just let us know.
I think the assurances we had is that we will have a bill.
Great. Thanks.
All right, Councilor Ross, did you want to?
I did. Mr. Levis, I know you and I talked about this yesterday. When it comes to these issues and using the council members and the mayor as a tool to advance our efforts in Washington, D.C., you already do this. We just wanted to emphasize that for the public's benefit, that to use us and take advantage of us at the time is needed in Washington, D.C., with Vicki Cram, Bal Janik, when they see the need to ask for our assistance to advance our efforts for the citizens of the city. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think the record should reflect, before I vote on this, that my son is on the staff of the Nevada Cancer Institute as an oncologist and researcher, so I don't believe that that would affect my ability to generally support the project, but I did feel that I should make a public disclosure of that. All right, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to accept the report as given.
All right, let's go, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item forty-two is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Confidentiality and Joint Representation Agreement Between the State of Nevada, Clark County, and City of Las Vegas for Legal Representation Regarding the Licensing proceeding for Yucca Mountain and Other Matters Related There, too. Would you serve it?
Good morning, Mayor and council. As the council is aware, the city has been a participant in a lawsuit with the state and Clark County and other entities fighting the sighting of the nuclear waste repository at Yucca Mountain. We believe that sometime toward the middle of this year, that the good folks at the Department of Energy are going to apply for a license to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, which provides us another opportunity to challenge the dump and the licensing proceeding. The confidentiality and joint representation agreement before you today would once again have the state fund a lawsuit with the city and county as participants to challenge the licensing proceeding. It's in order, and I recommend it for your approval.
All right, are there any comments or questions, Mr. Gerben? All right, hearing done. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to follow staff recommendation with a couple comments. I really feel like that we are, I'm already making a dent here. I think we are in the process of winning this fight, and so I, my motion would be to continue fighting.
All right, very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. And Ms. Bridges, as the mayor, I have signed the confidentiality agreement on behalf of the city council. Thank you. All right. Item number forty-three is not to be heard before 11:00 a.m. That's a hearing, discussion, and possible action regarding a complaint seeking disciplinary against the veterans of foreign wars, post number 10057. So we will call that at 11:00, but not before that time. Item forty-four is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Temporary Approval of a New Beer Wine Cooler On-Sale License for Intra-Mezo, Doing Business as Mezzo Bistro Italiano at 2475 North Rancho Drive in Suite 130. This is in Ward Six.
Mayor, members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. The applicant we have before us today has met the criteria for consideration of a temporary license, and that would be my recommendation.
All right, very good. Yes, sir. Would you please identify yourself?
Hello, this is Marcus Skrizzi, Chef Mark, owner and operator of the restaurant.
All right, this is your big chance to.
I've been before this council a couple of times, and everybody's been so helpful to me for a couple of different projects. And finally, I'm selling it in Ward Six again with a restaurant. This is my second one. I used to have a steakhouse, and now this is going to be something that's going to be more friendly to the economy today. I think that I spent the last year cooking at home, inviting people over, and having a lot of parties, and it's taught me that people like the simpler things, the fresh homemade things that I'm going to bring to the table at this location, and a lot of different wine. So we're going to have a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to it.
What is your specialty dish? This is your big chance.
Ah, the specialty dish is fresh seafood always, things like that, and also making pasta from scratch and putting different ingredients in it and making a sauce out of wine. I love doing that stuff.
Are you catering our luncheon today?
I certainly will consider that shortly after, for you.
Very good. After the vote, after the vote.
Yeah, and every Saturday night, we're going to show the movie Casino on the big screen.
Oh, what is this, just for beer and wine? Let's get the full liquor license here. All right, may I have a motion, please? Councilor Ross?
You know, Your Honor, Mark, when we had a chat yesterday, I want you to share with the mayor and the council and the folks in the audience watching where you received your training. Can you share with us?
Well, actually, when we were kids, we all grew up doing things in, from my dad's kitchen, you know, in Singer Island, Florida. He had a restaurant, and we all started making things from scratch, you know, the doughs in the pot, in a big bowl over a garbage can to hold it sturdy. And then learning all along, then started going to Italy a couple years ago and training in kitchens in Tuscany and things like that. So it started in the family, and it moved to Italy. So I kind of have the ingredients of European and American altogether and family. So that's what we're bringing to the table there.
And for him to bring this out to Ward Six, I know the residents out there are excited and looking forward to this. And when I talk to him about this, I figured it'd be the higher end, and it's not. It's the affordable dishes.
Yeah, I've always been in the higher-end bracket, and then, you know, I was, you know, also going to open up in, right in the heart of Summerlin in Boca Park. That didn't work out. And when I saw this place for sale, driving down Rancho, I said, there's nowhere to eat. I live in the northwest, and there's nowhere to eat. There's a few chain restaurants that are nice, but you can't get a real meal out there anywhere. And I said, I'm going to open up right here, take a chance. And if the rent's a third, it would have been in Summerlin, so I'm happy about it. And I think the people are going to find me in the north that would have drove farther to see me.
You know, now that you've said that, all the restaurateurs will be running to Ward Six, so.
They should. I mean, it's a great, you know, I think it's a revitalized area.
Yeah.
You know, everything's opening up around there, and it's a great center, a little center with waterfalls on the rocks coming down when you enter into it. It's, all signs point to a success, especially with, you know, ours experience, twenty-five years in restaurants I've been doing.
And now he's got a restaurant that I can actually afford to go eat.
Yeah, it's going to be very affordable.
So with that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations, and that's my motion.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. When are you going to open?
I hope on the 23rd softly, and we'll be ready to go, towards the end of the month.
I don't know why they could wait that long. Last question is.
Certainly. Are you going to have pizza?
We are having a pizza. It's an individual pizza that we do. I learned in Naples, Italy, and it's a very authentic Italian pizza that gets a little bit caramelized by the flame of the wood. So there's no gas, it's just wood, and that's the pizza we're going to have. Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, very good. Good luck to you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, item forty-five is. All right, item forty-five is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of change of ownership for a supper club license from bankruptcy estate of Anvui, that's A-N-V-U-I, LLC, doing business as Hannah's Restaurant, to Nauru Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Seastone, LLC, at 1050 South Rampart Boulevard in Ward Two.
Mayor, Members of Council, the applicants that we have here today has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval, and that would be our recommendation.
Very good. Folks, we'd be happy to hear from you. Could you identify yourself, please?
This is Chin Miao. I'm the owner and then managing the restaurant.
And this is Wesley Chang, and I help her open the restaurant, and I will leave the place after she establishes her business.
Okay.
And we will serve Pan Asian food there. It will be a one-stopping shop, kind of like one-stop shopping. A lot of places with sushi, a lot of people doesn't eat raw fish, but we're serving raw fish, including dim sum, which is a small pieces of a dumpling, and you could see it on the cart. So kind of like, we have a little bit of a buffet on cart, a little bit of steaks and raw fish altogether.
Boy, it's very hard running this meeting. When you're drooling, I'm so hungry I can't stand.
Raw fish?
Don't worry about it. It's, they call it raw fish, we call it sushi.
Yeah, we've got to put the stone barbecue. It's a fusion, so Pan Asian fusion.
Oh, Pan Asian fusion, excellent.
The reason we named Seastone is because we will have a hot stone as a plate, and we will deliver it to the table, and a customer could actually cook on top of the stone. So we named it after Seastone. So it'll be a table barbecue, but the stone will be preheated from the kitchen and served it on the table.
Sounds terrific. That's great. All right, are there any other comments or questions? All right, this is Councilor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. When do you folks expect to be up and running?
End of January for the soft opening, and then we'll have a grand opening after the one we bought, ten days after that, after the coordinate of people.
Great. Well, welcome to Ward Two. You're going into a great area right there in Boca Park. It's going to only get greater and greater with the addition to the Village, which is just a couple blocks north of you, right at the corner of Rampart and Alta. So I wish you luck, and my motion is for approval.
All right, let's vote, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you, folks. Item forty-six is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new auctioneer license, Auction Exchange International, LLC, doing business as Auction Exchange International at 2239 South Rainbow Boulevard. This is at Ward One.
Mayor, Members of Council, the applicants today have met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval, and that would be our recommendation, subject to all conditions.
Very good. Folks, would you identify yourselves, please?
Good morning. My name is Johnny Watts. I'm the broker manager.
I'm Diana Stansberry. I am the managing director of our auction company, and I'm an auctioneer.
Ooh. We're going to hear it soon. Yes, sir.
My name is Junius Johnson. I'm the auctioneer.
All right, now, this is very important to me. Could you do an auction thing for me? Pretend I want to buy something. What are you going to sell? Everything, right?
Let's see what we've got looking at.
Real estate. Okay, I want to buy this piece of property, but I'm only ready to pay $100,000 for it.
You want to pay $100,000, Mayor?
Yes, that's what I want.
Have you had an opportunity to look at the property?
Well, I looked at the alley. I was ready to pay $100,000 for the alley. I'm ready to pay a million dollars for this piece of property.
You want to pay a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
And you looked at it.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor, let's set sail then. Let's start the bid at $1 million. Will you bid $1 million for it?
Yes.
You bid $1 million. That was easy, Mayor. You made a catch.
Okay.
Okay, we'll give you a little chat.
Okay, good.
Let's start at $400,000. We go four now, only $400,000. Five, $500,000. We've been by five, five hundred. Six hundred. Seven, seven hundred. Eight hundred. Nine, we're all set and done, sir. We've been by, got a bid over here, got a bid over here. Now we go eight, 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 and I got eight hundred. Now we're nine. We go nine, listen to that. I have $900,000. Now we go $1 million. I have $1 million, one million, go a million, one. I have a million, one now here. Now we go a million, two. One, one point two, one point two. Thank you, sir. We go one point three. We've been by, we have one point three. Thank you very much. We go one point four. We've been by one point four. All set and done? Sir? We're going to sell it here. Mayor, it's for you, Mayor.
For me? A million four? Forget about it.
For the, for the, for the, Mayor, we're going to back it down here. We're going to sell it back to, for a million dollars. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. That's great. I think that the council was, your turn.
Wonderful, wonderful presentation. I move to approve.
Okay, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck. Forty-eight is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license for Five Star Consumers, Inc., doing business as Sunflower Massage at 2127 Paradise Road in Ward Three. Mr. DeFiori.
Mayor, Members of the council, this item was before you in December, and we had some concerns with the applicant who was a non-resident of Nevada at that time, coming into Las Vegas and operating a massage establishment. Since that time, I've had a chance to meet with Mr. Tang, and he has moved to Las Vegas, is renting actually an apartment across the street from where he intends to operate his business. He also intends to operate or be there on the premises for at least half the time, and the young lady next to him is a licensed massage therapist who will be sharing the responsibility of management with him during this interim period. However, what I would like to do too, one more thing too, he did voluntarily discontinue the reflexology. That was a consideration in the prior meeting we had. What I would like to do, though, is recommend a temporary license for six months. This is a, obviously, a highly privileged licensed business, and Mr. Tang has no formal background in massage, and a temporary license for six months with a review at that time, and also, I'd like to have the council consider limited hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I know many, many times, we have done that just to make sure that the operation is being run properly and according to code, and I think that the current standards that we have for new businesses, although because he's in a location that's been an existing business, doesn't necessarily apply, but the new standard in business operations is for a limited number of hours, and I'm going to suggest we have a limited number of hours from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the six-month review.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any comments or questions to Mr. DeFiori? Mr. Tang, would you like to be heard?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councils. We just want to prove that we are very serious in our business, so we would like you to grant us this opportunity.
And thank you, sir.
Do you agree to all the conditions that are set forth?
Yes.
Okay.
So we will, we will prove ourselves that we will be.
That's fine. I move to follow staff recommendation for approval with hours set as not from 9:00 to 9:00.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post.
With a six-month review.
Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right, item fifty will be trailed to be heard after item fifty-seven. Item fifty-one will be trailed to be heard after item fifty-seven. Item fifty-two is R-4-2008, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Adopting an Amended Fee Schedule for Emergency Medical Transportation Services Provided by the Department of Fire and Rescue, which pertains to all wards of the city chief cabinet.
Mayor, Members of the council, last summer, in June of 2007, we conducted our first Citizens Advisory Panel, first one that I can remember since I've been on the department. We brought in eight influential members of the community, who all had various backgrounds in business dealings and had a sound understanding of how the community works. And what they did is, they spent five weeks, they learned as much about the fire department as we could share with them. We answered every question that they had. We didn't hold anything from them, and we were available to them for those five weeks to answer whatever questions that may have come up. The more that they inquired about things, the more questions that they had. After five weeks, that panel put together a recommendation to the fire department, not for us to look at, for us to operate, but just some recommendations from their experiences in the community that may go to help us. One of the items that they gave to us, and I'd like to read it right off of their recommendation, was to consider eliminating the need for council action to change the ambulance fee rates. The process outlined in Municipal Code Section 6.08.190 should occur automatically. Rate increases would occur based on adjustments to the Consumer Price Index and private ambulance increases. For the last number of years, we've lagged behind the private ambulance companies at service here in Las Vegas. What we're proposing is that we bring our EMS transport rates up approximately 38% to be more in line with what the private ambulance providers charge here in the valley. This will increase our rates, increase our income. We fill approximately 1.6 million per year. It's a significant increase, but when you look at what the other providers are providing in the valley and their increases, it's still less. We're still the lowest charging provider for EMS care here in the Las Vegas Valley. The public will see no change in their service. There's no, you know, it's going to be transparent. It's just going to be how we charge. We're just bringing ourselves up in line with what AMR, Medic West, and Henderson Fire Departments charge.
Very good. Are there any questions to the chief?
Just a comment, please, Your Honor. During my briefing, the chief told me something that was, really made a lot of sense, that we are so low that those people that needed to be delivered to the hospital are asking for us to transport them rather than the other companies. So we're finding ourselves that we don't have enough time and staff and ambulances to do this, so I think we need to bring ourselves up, following their recommendation, bring us up level with the other providers.
What Mayor Protem said is correct. It's, you know, when a patient is there who's not seriously hurt and they have the choice between two providers, we have a franchise agreement, and, you know, our piece of the pie is 15%. That's all that we're shooting for, primarily motor vehicle accidents and some life and death cases where we don't have time to wait for the ambulance. But some of the members of the public, they do understand that we're quite a bit cheaper. And when we're there with a private ambulance and the question does come up, okay, well what are you going to charge us? And what are you going to charge us? And we want to be honest with them, and we share that with them, and they choose the fire department. And we can't keep transporting. We're not equipped to do more transporting than what we're doing.
It's amazing that you ask how much we charge, and then when we bill them, they don't pay it.
The blacks don't take care of that, though.
All right, we're going to make an effort to beef up the collection as well, correct?
And this rate increase will automatically take effect at the beginning of each year. That's the way that the CPI MCS is set up, so that at the first of, or in December, the rate increase for the private ambulances automatically increases. It will be the same for us, so we won't have to come before you again to ask for an increase. It's just going to automatically take care of itself.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I would follow staff recommendation.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, item fifty-three is the Traffic and Parking Commission, the term of Martin Esben, which expires February 21st, 2008. Mr. Esben was recommended by Councilman Wilson. He desires to continue service, and our options are either to reappoint him or to appoint a new Ward Two resident for the seat. I'll follow your recommendation, Councilman Wilson, whatever it is.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. If anybody knew Martin Esben, they'd know he is the perfect person for this job. He's a great community participant. He does a really, really good job, so I'm going to recommend him for reappointment.
All right, I nominate him for appointment, once again, for the Traffic and Parking Commission. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-four is Civil Service Board of Trustees, the term of Priscilla Roca, which expires February 21st, 2008. Ms. Roca expresses a desire to be reappointed. She was recommended by Councilman Reese, so whatever your recommendation.
I would follow Priscilla's desire to be reappointed. She has served admirably, and she does a great job representing the city of Las Vegas. I'll make a motion, ask half her reappointed.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-five, this is bill number 2007-75, in ordinance creating special improvement district number 1510, Cliff Shadows Parkway, from I-215 to Lone Mountain Road. Councilwoman Tarkini, do you wish to have it read?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2007-75, in ordinance screening city of Las Vegas, special improvement district number 1510, Cliff Shadows Parkway, I-215 to Lone Mountain Road, prescribing details of connection therewith and other matters relating thereto.
Good. Councilwoman, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-six is bill number 2007-76, annexation number ANX-19110, property located on the southwest corner of Grand Teton Drive in Tenay Way. This is, let's see, Spinnaker Homes, 40.19 acres. And Councilwoman, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill number 2007-76, first amendment, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to specifically describe the line of the ANX, we make its enhanced services laws obligations administered to the city and private related matters.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-seven is drill number 2007-77. This implements Section 4.040 of the city charter relative to the appointment of certain hearing commissioners. I'm going to also read at this time item fifty, which is discussion and possible action regarding funding of the positions of Deputy City Attorney One and Legal Technician One in conjunction with the implementation, the appointment of hearing commissioner relative to bill number 2007-77. And discuss, item fifty-one is discussion and possible action regarding funding to implement the appointment of hearing commissioners relative to bill number 2007-77, along with supporting staff and equipment. Councilwoman, do you wish to have bill number 2077 read, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill number 2007-77, in ordinance to implement Section 4.040 of the city charter relative to the appointment of certain hearing commissioners and private related matter.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carmody, did you wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of council.
In combination with your consideration of Bill Number Two Oh Seven Seven Seven, we're also requesting your authorization to begin to implement the Traffic Commissioner Program upon passage of the bill, if you choose to pass the bill. Based on our analysis, and we've shared some of this with you in briefing, but based on our analysis of the traffic cases currently dismissed or vacated in our criminal courts, we anticipate that the implementation of the Traffic Commissioner Program will result in an increase in fines and fees that will exceed the costs of this program by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. So there will not be additional cost to the general fund. In fact, there will be additional monies, we believe, going to the general fund as a result. There's also a few other benefits that I would like to have you consider. One is there will be an improved efficiency in the imposition and collection of fines and fees, we believe, because the Traffic Commissioner will be focused exclusively on the resolution of traffic-related matters, which would provide for a more consistent approach to imposing sanctions for traffic violations. Secondly, we will improve service to the citizens, because citizens who come to the counter, they wish to see a judicial officer. Once we have the Traffic Commissioner, they'll be able to see the Traffic Commissioner the same day. They won't need to be told to come back another day to see one of our judges. And third, and I think most important for us perhaps, is the increased judicial focus on other criminal matters that we want to be dealing with in this city, matters such as driving under the influence of alcohol, battery, domestic violence. Those matters, because of the traffic matters that get into our courtrooms that don't need to be there, judges' calendars get backed up with traffic matters and time spent on these other matters gets delayed. So for those reasons, I would urge your consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mr. Cármeni or comments?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Mr. Cármeni, thanks for all your hard work on this. Betsy, thank you for your work in getting this up through the legislature. I think that this is an excellent, excellent bill. I'm very pleased that it's going to most likely be as self-funding as I use it. I'm very much looking forward to having a discussion in about a year to see how our revenue has actually paid for, if not even more, this program. This is in line with, I think, what a more modern city needs to do, which is creating specialty courts. And by doing this, that's what we're doing. We're assigning a judge that's just going to hear traffic matters, which will free up our municipal court judges to hear, like you say, the more important cases, the domestic batteries and the DUIs. We have a serious problem value-wide with DUIs and domestic batteries, so by creating this Traffic Commissioner, as you say, we're going to free up time for our judges to focus on real, real, serious problems. Couple of questions. Jim, I think I asked you to be prepared for this. Do we have any idea of what percentage of the people that come before the municipal court, whether it be in general or on traffic matters, that are of the minority demographic?
We know those who come to our front counter to resolve traffic matters. We know those that come to the counter that require assistance because they do not speak English, especially those who speak Spanish. We have a cumatic that counts those individuals who pull a ticket, who need to see someone at our counter, who in fact can speak Spanish and assist them with their resolution. We average about a hundred and thirty Spanish-speaking citizens a day who come to our counter to resolve traffic matters at our counter. That's about ten percent. We average between a thousand and twelve hundred citizens a day who come to our counter, so that's about ten percent of the people who come to our counter require assistance in Spanish. In terms of our courtrooms, we don't know that number as specifically. What I can tell you is, right now, this year, we're spending around two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for interpreters in our courtrooms. Next year, we're asking for two hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, about a twenty percent increase. Forty-five thousand of that is allocated to the Traffic Commissioner, because we know that we're going to have to provide interpreter service in the Traffic Commissioner courtroom for those who need assistance. So forty-five thousand will be added to our courtroom interpreters. We have full-time interpreters in the mornings and then as required for trials. So I don't know a number, though. I only know the costs involved.
And what you just provided us is primarily for the Hispanic
Yes.
section of our community.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor, if you're ready, I'm ready to move for a vote.
Counselor Brown, did you have a question?
Just curious, Jim, as far as that, is that cost placed on the municipal court irresponsible for interpreters in the courtroom?
Yes, we are, sir.
And is that by state statute?
In order to provide qualified interpreters in the courtroom, we must provide those interpreters who are certified by the courts. The district court has certified interpreters that are certified by the State Supreme Court through the Office of the Administrative Staff. We use those interpreters on contract. We do not hire full-time interpreters at the court. Am I answering your question?
So that is a cost of the court
Yes.
that is placed upon the city to provide those interpreters?
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman, do you wish to have the Bill Two Thousand Seven Dash Seventy-Seven read?
Yes, please.
It was read, Your Honor.
It has already been read?
That's what I thought. That's why I hesitated.
My mistake. My mistake. All right. Let's have the Councilman make a motion, Councilwoman make a motion on fifty-seven then, which is Bill Number Two Thousand Seven Dash Seventy-Seven.
Move to approve.
All right. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. And Counselman Wilson, did you want to make the motion on Items Fifty and Fifty-One? All right. All right, on Fifty and Fifty-One, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item fifty-nine, which is Bill Two Thousand Seven Dash Sixty-four, was previously stricken. Item sixty through sixty-five.
Wait a minute.
I'm wrong. I'm wrong.
Okay.
I could admit it. Item fifty-eight, Bill Number Two Thousand Seven Dash Seven, I was wishing it would go away.
It's forty.
Bill Number Two Thousand Seven Dash Seventy-nine allows short-term vacation rentals in certain residential districts as a conditional use. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
I wish to have it read as it was approved in Recommending Committee by myself and Counselman Wilson. Could Mr. Brad Jerbic, please, read it?
I'll be happy to. Councilwoman, Bill Number Twenty Seven Dash Seventy-nine, First Amendment, An Ordnance to Temporarily Suspend Enforcement of Ordinance Number Fifty-nine Forty-three, Related Short-Term Vacation Rentals and Provided for Related Matters.
All right.
If you'd like, I'll be glad to make a record on what happened yesterday at Recommending Committee.
Please, I think it would help as far as these folks are concerned.
There was a significant
Listen carefully, folks. Listen carefully.
There was a significant change to the ordinance that came out of Recommendation yesterday out of the Recommending Committee. Let me back up in time. In November of last year, the city council adopted an ordinance that was Ordinance Number Fifty-nine Forty-three, which prohibited short-term vacation rentals, that is, any rental in a residential area for less than thirty days. Following the adoption of that ordinance, I was directed to meet with members of the industry who rented short-term rentals in residential areas to discuss whether or not there would be some kind of exception made or some permit process. I did that and prepared an ordinance that created a permit process with some restrictions. That ordinance was the original ordinance, Number Twenty Seven Dash Seventy-nine. Yesterday at Recommending Committee, it was agreed that the original ordinance that was adopted in May would be recommended to this council as First Amendment, suspending the enforcement of that original ordinance. That would bring us back to where we were before the ordinance was adopted in November. I was also directed to meet with members of the industry, city staff, concerned neighbors that have to put up with party houses and the like, to see if we can put together an even tighter version of the original ordinance that was scheduled to be considered by this council today. That is my plan, is to, in the next couple of days, begin those series of meetings. And I've been directed to have an ordinance back before this council for consideration and adoption on the first meeting in March. If this ordinance passes today, that is what will happen. And if there is an agreement amongst industry and staff and neighbors as to tighter language that will regulate bad use of short-term vacation rentals, then that ordinance will be up for consideration first meeting in March. If that ordinance is not agreed upon, then the original ordinance would go back into effect. There'd be plenty of notice for everyone to know that that was going to happen and the original ordinance that was Twenty Seven Dash Seventy-nine could be reintroduced. That's where we're at.
All right. So if I understand it correctly, Mr. Jerbic, if we vote to approve Bill Number Two Thousand Seven Dash Seventy-nine, that in effect will negate the effect of the prior ordinance, that this will not go into effect until the March fifth meeting and it will be subject to public discussion on March the fifth?
That's correct. What will happen is, if there's nothing on the agenda, it wouldn't be subject to discussion. My anticipation is there will be a new ordinance and it will be tighter than the one that was scheduled to be considered today. That would be the forum for the public discussion. This ordinance today will suspend enforcement of the ordinance that was adopted last year until March fifth.
Okay. So you folks understand that the ordinance to which you found some difficulty will be suspended and we're going to be considering a new ordinance on March the fifth. I'm happy to hear from you, but I will tell you this, that if you come back on March the fifth and you're going to say the same thing, I'll just reincorporate what you're saying today into the record. So you have a choice of coming back on the fifth or speaking today, whatever your pleasure.
I was just going to
You have to give us your name, though, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. I personally would just like to commend the efforts of Councilman Wilson and Tarkanian on yesterday's recommendation. I was impressed with the priority you made for this effort and I want to formally accept the invitation with City Attorney and pretty much, I wanted to come here to applaud that decision yesterday.
Very good. We have to give us your name, though, for the
Christopher Hunt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
All right.
All right, folks, I assume that Mr. Hunt speaks for everybody?
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't? Okay. He doesn't? Do you want to, today he speaks, or do you want to speak?
Who else?
Okay.
Good morning, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Palmer and I, along with my partner, run a vacation rental business here in town. And I don't want to talk about everything we've already talked about. I want to talk about my story as a customer of vacation rentals, one that I haven't heard anyone talk about. I'm a longtime resident of California. I relocated to Las Vegas four years ago, though I've been coming here my whole life. The reason that I did that was because I had the opportunity to bring my family here on vacation. We stayed for one week in a house in Green Valley. It's the first time I'd ever not been in a casino. It was that experience that led me to find out what it was like in a Las Vegas suburb, how great it could be, how convenient everything was, how wonderful it was, and led my family to reconsider, or to consider relocating here and then eventually relocate here. I sold my businesses in the Bay Area and moved them here. I have several of them. I invested in the area. I do nothing but promote Las Vegas constantly. I love it here. I love the city and I wouldn't consider moving away. If not for the vacation rental experience, none of that would have happened. I wouldn't have known anything about it. My entire vision of this place would have been what's on the strip and it would have continued to be that way. I ask you to think about these things as we move forward towards March and you think about that this sort of story happens every single day because of the business that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, if you don't mind, go ahead and make a comment.
Sure.
First of all, Mr. Jerbic, I thought we talked about, is he here?
Right.
Well, he left. Well, he'll listen to my comments. I'd like the bill to read, Mr. Jerbic, I'd like us to consider when we come back on March fifth, for the bill to read short-term rentals, not vacation rentals, because I think everybody in the industry would agree that it's not just for vacationing people. It includes a wide variety of persons that would use a short-term rental for a number of things. I think the clear intent, as we discussed in the Recommending Committee, and by the way, I want to, again, publicly thank all of you folks for being patient and persistent, the double P, if you will, because it's your input and your involvement and your tenacity that has brought us to today and will bring us back on March fifth. Our intent is to come back and have hearings or private meetings, if you will, between now and then, to get input from anybody, to present what I would call a bill that's very similar to the bill that was going to be considered for adoption today, but it does need some refinement. And Councilwoman Tarkanian and I are going to continue to work together to make it the best bill we can. I think what we've all experienced in the last couple of months and couple of weeks and couple of days is good government, because it's people working not against each other but with each other towards a good result. I'm going to publicly say this, because in the last few days, I've gotten emails from people that have said, well, I didn't know this bill was coming forward. Well, I said back in December, when the original bill was passed, that I was going to move forward with an amended ordinance, so I announced back then of my intentions and I'm doing it again. My intention is to sponsor a bill to come back on March fifth. So anybody that wants to provide any input, I don't care if it's people in the industry or private property owners, this is your invitation to contact Mr. Brad Jerbic, our City Attorney, to schedule a meeting and provide input, because it's my intent to sponsor a bill to be considered on March fifth. Thank you.
My name's Cheryl Tarantino and my company is Executive Locations and been in business here sixteen years as a Realtor Property Manager and then owned my own brokerage. We specialize in corporate housing and fully furnished homes. We sell them, we decorate them, we manage them, and then we resell them down the road. I just wanted to applaud the members of the council and let you know that I sincerely appreciate the time that you've given us out of your busy schedules to meet individually with several of the members of our group here and let us voice, you know, the concerns that we have about the party homes as well, that we're very concerned about the abusive uses that affect the neighbors. I'm a neighbor too, you know, and we have personal commitment to that as well. I also want to applaud Councilwoman Tarkanian's decision to bring this into the mix and to bring it out into the open, allowed us to realize some of the laws that we weren't aware of and we appreciate that and we look forward to working with all of you to go forward and draft a much tighter bill to get rid of the illegitimate use and to applaud and encourage the legitimate use and the appropriate uses of our industry and that we do have an industry. And just, we were talking about employment a little bit earlier. I just wanted to let you know that my company alone is responsible for employing a minimum of one hundred people in the city. So we are, you know, we are a large industry, we're a thriving industry. We buy local furnishings and for our units, we employ local people and it's important to us. And the city has given me a lot of personal inspiration to come forward and be an entrepreneur and, you know, build it and they will come, kind of an attitude. So I do appreciate your hearing us and listening to us and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Councilman, Council lady. I've really enjoyed getting to know you. My name is Van Wilson. I'm with Professional Asset Management, Inc. We are, own and manage a number of properties in Las Vegas and Clark County. Some of them are high-end homes, some of them are low-end homes, and we've also got residential apartment buildings as well. We rent short-term, long-term, midterm, weekly rentals. Sometimes the weekly rentals that we do are because some of the social services that you honored here this morning are helping with some of my low-income people. I deal with people of all different ethnicities, as you've mentioned many times, Councilwoman, today. I speak three languages myself and I have a great desire to help the underclass and underprivileged. Any bill that would come forth that would limit or eliminate the ability to rent houses less than thirty days would eliminate a lot of poor people's housing and people that, for whatever reason, for a number of different reasons, cannot pay on a monthly basis, they're cash-strapped or they're, there's a number of people that live here that are on a cash basis, let's say, and they work on tips and a number of other areas and their money flows in and out very quickly. And the only way that a landlord can make that payment is to accept them as a weekly rental. And eviction court establishes that and approves of that and will evict on a weekly rental. And that's because I'm, you know, when I first came here, I have to applaud you, because when I first came here, I was ready for a big war. And Councilman Wilson said it, this is good government. I've grown to appreciate your jobs, appreciate what you do every day, and I wouldn't want to do it myself, but I'm glad that you do and that you do a good job of it. However, we're dealing with some things that are quite sticky wickets and I wanted to, since this is a public forum and you're dealing with some complaints that are way off the bend on this end and way off the bend on this end, I wanted to make some things clear of what the laws are on this that some people may not know. There are constitutional property rights that provide for the rental of houses and homeowners have that right to rent their houses any way they see fit. And there are groups out there that advocate that any such bill that would prohibit the free rental to anyone they so choose without discrimination is in fact a per se taking and is worthy of compensation as such. It's an eminent domain. And so, as I said, when I was coming here, I was coming here from California with the backing of some large groups that were ready to go to war. And I said, wait, well, I'm one for a win-win. I agree with Councilwoman Tarkanian. I like to do negotiations and win-win situations. If we could figure out a way to solve all the problems, then let's do that. There are people who are abusing those property rights, however. And while I'm not a lawyer, I went to business school and my business law professor taught me something important. He said, you know, anybody can swing their arms out anywhere they want to, but their rights to swing their arms extend and stop when they come in contact with my nose. And what's happening, and even a little bit before that, when they start to come close to my nose, I start to back off. And the sticky wicket here is, how close are we coming and where do we draw this line? When we say a When we say a year rental, a month rental, three days rental, I, there are cities all over the United States that have laws similar to this because of some problems that have come up. However, those laws have not solved the problems that they were trying to, to solve, that being people abusing those rights, people having parties and loud nuisances and other things, which are already on the books as being against the law. It's against the law to have health and safety violations, or have too many cars parked in a particular area, it's against the law to have noise violations after 10:00 PM, it's already, those are already on the books. So while I'm against and abeyance at this time of not moving forward and voting for this today, I'm, I'm even against having any law whatsoever, but I know I'm in the minority in that, I'm still moving forward with, let's find a solution that really works for everybody. But keep in mind that we've got some people that are complaining that are way off the charts. We have some people complaining that-
I'm going to have to cut you short-
Go ahead.
Because we have a, a hearing scheduled for 11 o'clock this morning, and-
All right. But I, I really appreciate your time today, and I appreciate all the input, and I look forward to working with you. It was fun.
Thank you very much, Jim. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. It's side note, that was one of the best impressions of a attorney I've ever seen, completely with statistics and everything, very convincing to some people. My question is addressed to the council. How many illicit petitioners of the subject topic are there? If there is one, that's too many. Thank you for your concerns.
Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Hardy, 123 Star David. I want to back Councilman Wilson up on one thing that you said, you want to make some changes in the wording. Wording is very important in everything we do. And, and like I said, this has been a sticky subject, so I was here when, last time y'all spoke about it, so I'm going to quit, Mr. America, and so be ahead as a king. But the main thing is, whatever you do in the end, your wording is very important, to make sure that this law is always, you know, kept properly, and doesn't hurt feelings on either side. If it's done properly, it's good for everybody, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Teddy Russell, resident in Las Vegas, Nevada. Exact concurrence with Mr. Jurbik's plan and scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, I'd just like to say that this has been a complicated process, it's taken a lot of work, I believe very strongly it shows that we make every attempt possible at the city to follow the democratic process and to bring in people that have concerns. You know, they have these different types of bills all over the city, all over the country, as someone mentioned, no, no short-term rental at all, three days, seven days, one month, whatever, they have withstood constitutional challenges. The key thing here is, however, what we discussed, and that is, none of them are really working. And we are hoping that the structure of the bill is good, the ordinance is good now, but we need to tighten up and figure out a better way to enforce. Nobody's gotten as good as it should be yet, and we're thinking we can do it. And so I move to approve.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item 59, which is Bill 2007-64, was previously stricken. Item 60 through 65, Bill 2007-78, and 2008-1 through 2008-5 are eligible for adoption My watch shows that it's after 11:00 AM, and we have a matter number 43, which was not to be heard before 11:00 AM. Hearing, discussion, and possible action regarding complaint seeking disciplinary action against veterans of foreign wars post number 10057, 1905 North H Street in Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, for violations of the Las Vegas Municipal Code. This is in Ward 5.
Your Honor, before Mr. Henry speaks, I'd like to make a, a bit of a record here. Yesterday, I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, you want to make a record? Go ahead.
Pardon me, Council, but if I might, Your Honor, the, the law requires that before the proceedings can begin, I need to lodge with the clerk, proof of service of notice of today's hearing, and so I'll do that.
Okay. All right, the clerk has received that. Who received service?
Service was received by the resident agent and by the manager.
All right, can we have names, please, for the record?
Yes, can I have those back, please? Claude Brown at 1320 West Monroe Avenue, and Albert Young at 1905 North H Street.
All right.
The former being the resident agent, according to the Secretary of State's database.
All right, and when was the service made upon both of those gentlemen?
Each of them was served December 7th, with your December 5th order and notice of hearing.
Very good, thank you. All right, Mr. Jurbik, did you want to be heard?
Very briefly, Your Honor. Yesterday, it was, it came to my attention that Attorney Rex Bell was retained by the Veterans of Foreign War to represent them at this hearing. I received a call from Mr. Bell, and because I was in meetings all day yesterday, I wasn't able to return it until about 5:00 o'clock last night. Mr. Bell told me that he had a funeral to attend today, that he had been retained, and he asked for a short continuance in order to represent the VFW at today's hearing. I told him that I would make that representation to the council, and it was a council decision. Because Mr. Henry was in arguments before the Ninth Circuit yesterday, I wasn't able to speak with him until this morning. When I told Mr. Henry of Mr. Bell's request, Mr. Henry brought to my attention the fact that this complaint has got a 60-day window in which it has to be heard. That is jurisdictional. If we continue this to another meeting for Mr. Bell to be present, this complaint will fail for jurisdictional reasons, and we'll have to refile, re-serve, and restart the process. With that record made, I made no promises to Mr. Bell as to what this council would do, I told him I would pass it on, and I did, I did not have an objection to it if the council did not, but at the same time, I did not know yesterday, when I spoke to him, that we were within the 60-day window, and we could not continue past this particular hearing date. With that, I submit to the council, and if Mr. Henry has anything to add, this is a good time to do it.
I'd like to augment the record briefly.
Well, I'd like to, before there's any augmentation, I'm going to speak on behalf of Councilman Barlow. I, I went to Councilman Barlow's office this morning, and asked him whether or not any requests had been made concerning this matter to him, because he is the councilman for the particular ward where the property is located. He said he hadn't heard from anybody, and I said, that surprised me a little bit, because I had heard that council had been retained for the, the post, and was going to be seeking a continuance. He said he didn't hear a word, and he's ready to go forward, so I felt that I should put that on the record.
If I might, Mayor, bearing in mind that at least once in the litigation history of the city, a district judge has found that we didn't have a sufficient record for denying a continuance, I'd like to augment the record that pursuant to law, this matter was brought before the council in the first instance on December 5th, 2007, on an agenda item asking that you approve the disciplinary complaint and set the matter for hearing. Also pursuant to law, notice of those proceedings were given. At that hearing, I believe Mr. Young appeared, and the council on December 5th did approve the complaint and set the matter for hearing today. On December 7th, the order approving complaint and notice of hearing was served on the resident agent and Mr. Young. And I would like to read relevantly from the second page of that order. The hearing will be upon the charges in the complaint for disciplinary action which has been served upon you. You may be present at the hearing, and you may be represented by a lawyer. You may present any relevant evidence you have, and you will be given full opportunity to cross-examine all witnesses testifying against you. You are further notified that within 20 days after service of the complaint for disciplinary action, but not later than five days before the hearing date, you must file with the city clerk and serve a copy upon the city attorney of your answer of the charges made in the complaint for disciplinary action, and set forth any affirmative defenses you intend to raise. So pursuant to law, they would have had to answer the complaint by the 27th. They did answer the complaint, but they answered it on January 10th, some 13 days late. The consequence of having failed to answer in a timely fashion is set forth in our Municipal Code at 6.88.080, which I've, I've put copies of it before each one of you. You know, I'm sorry, but, if I can have your indulgence just a moment, please.
Yeah, because what you put in front of me doesn't have any of the-
Yeah, you're, you're correct. What I should have put again before you, and I'm sorry I didn't, is 688-100. I'll read it to you. Failure to timely file his answer, or failure of a respondent or his counsel to appear at the hearing shall constitute an admission of all matters and facts contained in the complaint filed with respect to such respondent. In such cases, the city council may take action based upon such admission, or upon any other evidence. So-
Let me ask you this, we don't have a copy of the answer, or the response, it's not, hasn't been made available to us. Could I see that, please?
Yes. I went with Mr. Young and witnessed him serving it on the city clerk on the same
All right, well, apparently this is a response which was filed by Albert Young, a canteen manager for the Veterans of Foreign Wars for post number 1057. There, it was received January the 10th, as was represented by council. Could you tell me, first identify yourself.
Albert Young.
Mr. Young, why, why wasn't this served within the 20 days? Do you have a, a reason for it?
Well, it wasn't unclear, well, not clear, we didn't have counsel at the time that we served it, so we did the best we could at the time.
Let me, let me ask the city attorney, even though it's in the mandatory that they shall do certain things, for good cause shown, I, I could allow them to file this on a late basis, could I, Doc?
There is precedent for this. I, I do believe the law requires that they file by a particular date, but we've had situations where people have not filed at all, and this council's decided to have a hearing in spite of that, so there is precedent for that, Your Honor.
All right, well, I think, I think that based on all the equities here, I will receive this. I think it's important, however, Mr. Henry, that the council will receive a copy of this in anticipation of what we're going to be doing today. Can we have copies made of this, please?
It's in the back, it's in a green copy.
In the back here, this is the answer that we're referring to? All right, fine. All right, well, let's make this part of the record as it was, and let me hear Mr. Young as far as the request for a continuance here. I want you to make your record on that, unless, Mr. Henry, you have something you want to add in addition to what you've said concerning, starting today?
No, I, I would just point out that if we do continue this, if you were to continue it, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council is on the 6th of February, which would take you outside of the 60 days, and you'd lose jurisdiction over the complaint that you've approved.
Assuming, however, that we could enter into a stipulation, extending it or not? Or is it jurisdictional?
I believe it's jurisdictional.
All right, then it would require us setting it for a special hearing prior to the expiration of the 60 days.
The problem, yes, but the problem with that is that it would be potentially dangerous because state law requires that notice of hearing be given to the respondent in a particular fashion, and that fashion doesn't admit to the respondent being present before you and agreeing that he has noticed. It has to be done in writing. And so if you were to reset it, and I was unable to serve them in writing, then under state law, you wouldn't be able to go forward with this newly set hearing.
All right, I understand that. Now, Mr. Young, I'm going to allow you to tell us why you want to have this continued, then I'm going to turn to Councilman Barlow and have him give me some direction as to what he desires to do, and what he will, what he will tell us will have large bearing on what action we're going to take. Just, it's just the issue of why you would like us to continue this.
But the, the main issue, we don't have an attorney present, and this is a pretty serious allegations, and we do need someone to speak for us. At the time that we tried to seek attorney, no one wanted to go against City Hall. We found it, found it at the last moment, and here we are.
Okay, well, I want to make the record clear, you're not against City Hall. We're here, at least I'm here, and my council is here, to listen to the facts, and then to make a decision based on those facts. I don't have any predetermination one way or the other, and I want you to know that whatever we're going to do, it's going to be done on a level playing field here. But, yeah, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to make sure that the VFW post 10057 have due process and have access to an attorney who in fact will be able to represent them in the best way possible, so I would like to move forward to allow this to be continued, in order to make sure that the VFW post 10057 have an opportunity to be represented on a level playing field.
All right, thank you, sir. Assume that Mr. Young agrees to stick around, would you be able to get written notice to him today, if we are able to find a date which is agreeable to you, Mr. Henry, and Mr. Young, as well as the council, to have a hearing? Because I'll tell you, there are a lot of people out there who may want to be heard, and it may take more than the ordinary amount of time to conduct a hearing with these kinds of serious allegations.
I can do that.
Could you, and you'll stick around to get the notice?
No problem.
Well, yeah.
All right, what days are available within the 60-day timeframe?
The soonest we could have it posted and noticed for would be the 23rd of January, and you can go all the way up to February 4th.
All right, the 23rd of January is, that's a week from today, that should give Mr. Bell adequate opportunity to prepare. Metro, do you have a position? That may be.
Sergeant?
No, that's, I did it fine with it.
All right, very good, thank you.
Is that at a time certain?
Is that, is that a Monday?
It's a Wednesday, sir.
Well, there's been a request by, what is this succeeding Monday?
The 28th.
Yeah, for, for purposes of having the mayor pro tem schedule, we're going to set this for the 28th of January at 9:00. Please, after you get the notice from Mr. Henry today, go to Mr. Bell's office, give it to him, there'll be no further extensions, no further continuances, we'll start at 9:00 on that date. Yes, Councilman Bell?
Your Honor, if I may, on the 28th, Mayor Pro Tem and I are members of Metro Fiscal Affairs, that meeting begins at 8:30 in the county chambers.
Okay, we'll do it at 10:00? Will you, will you be available?
If, if that's-
10:00.
What, what, what's wrong with the 23rd on the Wednesday? I think that was a date that-
No, we're going to do it on Monday so that the mayor pro tem could be available. He's unavailable on the Wednesday.
Okay, so what?
The date again, Ms. Bridges?
It's the 28th.
It'll be January 28th, 10:00 in the morning, in these council chambers. What, Mr. Henry, you have a problem with that?
The clerk asked for advice that I thought was better put to Mr. Jurbik.
Are we recessing this item, or are we going to call a special council?
I would like to recess it over to that time, if that's agreeable with Mr. Henry. Is that consistent with your advice, Mr. Jurbik?
That's fine, I think, but we have to just keep track of this, so that at the end of the day, when we're done with the zoning calendar, that we don't adjourn, we recess to a time certain, 10:00 Wednesday morning.
Okay, that's what we're going to do. Now, Mr., see, that's not, Monday morning. Let's, let's not be confused, let's get the date again.
January the 28th.
January 28th, 10:00 in the morning, right here. If Mr. Bell is unavailable, we're starting without him. If he needed other attorney, we're not going to give him any more time, so I would suggest, because I know Mr. Bell's an honorable man, for you to tell him that the mayor and the council are very serious, that it will take place on that day.
No problem.
Very good.
Mayor, would you repeat and direct Mr.- Mayor, would you repeat and direct Mr. Young to sit here in the presence of the council?
He's going to do that. He's not going to leave. He's not leaving. He's going to follow you up to your office, Mr. Henry. He's going to be all over you like...
I'd rather have him stay here, and I'll go up to my office, prepare a document.
All right, fine. He'll stay here. He'll stay here. We may even bring him some lunch from that new restaurant that we have this morning. Okay, all right. Councilman Barlow, may I have your motion, please?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to, what would the motion be as far as recess or...
Move to recess this matter until January 28th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. I would like to move to recess this item until January 28th, 10:00 a.m.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. We'll see you back here at that time. Very good. Stick around.
I'll be right here, no problem.
Good, very good. And have your witnesses all ready and ready to go. And what I would suggest is this, please show the answer, your response that you filed on January 10th. Give that to Mr. Bell.
He has a copy.
Okay, make sure that he complies with our law so that we won't have any issues when we get here of a technical nature, and we'll be able to go right to the heart of the matter.
Okay.
Okay? All right, very good. We're in recess until 1:00 this afternoon.
Okay.
What's that? Might set a record today, folks. This is a big deal. We just started right on time. I'm going to call Item 66. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in the bay is to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor, we're done.
Item 77, 78, RQR. Councilor Ross asks that I be held in mess until our 2/22/2008.
Okay, any others? All right, let's vote on that.
Are we going to have discussion?
He just bought. Just bought.
Oh, let's go. You're fired.
All right, call for the question. Let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, this morning, we had a little bit of a mishap here on Item Number 44. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Temporary Approval of a New Beer Wine Cooler On Sale License for Intramezzo Inc., Doing Business as Metzo Bistro Italiano. And apparently, we had the wrong address, so I'm not going to repeat it. Ms. Myers?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council apologize for the typographical error. We had agended that the address was 2475 North Rancho. It's actually 4275, so I'd like to correct that for the record.
Look for approval, please.
All right, we don't need a motion, but that's fine. Let's vote. Post?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You know, I think we may need to rescind that previous item. Maybe the clerk can, if I need to rescind...
All right, all right.
I'd move to rescind Item 44, please.
All right, let's vote on that. Post?
I'd move to approve Item 44 with the correction of, what was the number again?
44. 4275.
4275, North Rancho Drive.
Let's vote, please. Motion carries.
Most of our city attorneys just keep to sit down and keep their mouths shut.
Tempers are raising here. Item 67 through 74, and the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and I recommend it for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would say that the concern, I'll make motion to approve Item 67 through 74 with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Then we have the one motion, one vote. This is two items. Item 75 is RQR 25900, a public hearing. The applicant owner is David and Carrie Broth. Request for required three-year review of an approved special use permit for livestock farming, 13 horses where a maximum of six horses is allowed, 1.08 acres, and a waiver of the minimum 1.25 acre parcel size requirement and the minimum square feet of lot area allowed per horse and bovine situated on 1.08 acres at 5401 Rome Boulevard and Ward 6. And 76 is ROC 25874, a public hearing as well. The applicant owner is Cheyenne Jones Development LLC. Request for review of condition to remove condition number 10 of an approved site development plan review, which stated air conditioning units shall not be mounted on rooftops at 4132 North Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward 5. These are both public hearings. They're both opened at this time. Any member of the public who wish to be heard on this can come forward and ask us to comment.
I don't want to make your day dull, so we're going to hurry it along. When you talk about horses, which is a very general animal, and they've been around for thousands of years.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Anything about horses...
If I could, we probably need to pull that item if you'd like to talk about that one and then vote on the other.
No, no, no. When you mention the word horses, that just got my Donny broke. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, would anyone else like to speak about horses or Donny Brooks or anything at this point in time? Would they like to address the issues of Item 75 or 76? Okay.
I'll make motion for approval with all conditions.
Let's vote. Yes?
Yes, I would like to pull Number 76 forward for comment, quick comment.
All right, then let's vote on 75.
I'd be my motion, sir.
All right, post, please. Okay, 76. I've read it into the record? Yes, sir.
Thank you. On Item Number 76, I want to make sure that the air conditioner units are set below the ridgeline of the top of the buildings. I do not want them to be in public view whatsoever, so I want to make sure that I go on record, Margot, making sure that that's the case. I don't want those units sitting out where it's visible from the public.
Mayor, councilman, we can add that as an additional condition.
The only thing I'm concerned about is that the applicant has made aware of that.
That is, if I may, Mayor and Councilman, that is the same language that he used in his, the applicant used in his request letter.
Very good. Would you contact them and make sure that they know that we're following that request?
Okay, so with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to the amendment and staff's conditions.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Item 79, Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates of appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings, the Kennedy Hole's architectural review committee, endangered buildings, or nuisance letter abatements? Thank you. All right, citizens' participation, folks. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please step up. Be happy to hear from you. We'll use a three-minute timer, please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes. I might need a half a minute beyond that, but I'm giving something to y'all, and this is most likely to be my last time down. Today is my birthday.
Happy birthday, sir.
I was born on the 16th of January, and we all know that the great Martin Luther King was born on the 15th, so he was born in '29, I was born in '31, so we're both with depression babies on the Hoover. Doesn't matter. But anyway, I'm just to show you today something I've been keeping. See, people who keep secrets is the ones to whom you think they can't. See, it isn't how much we say, it's what we say. The person can sit in the corner all day with tape on their mouth, and you can put it on, and they say two words and call it tragedy. So what I'm letting you know is that some of the best-kept secrets in this country is inside. I mean, but this one I can't carry with me, because five years from now, the Warren Commission say that after two generations, which 25 years, it'll be 50 years, and they, you know, ideas, they might. So I'm on notice because I have the right. In 1963, two days after President Kennedy was assassinated, I went to the Secret Service in Phoenix, and I begged that man, that Secret Service man, and he said, "Young man, say, you got a pregnant wife," and he said, "You just upset because of the death of the great president." But I received a message, and it did come true. And in 1964, the president, I mean Attorney General, Robert Kennedy, was Attorney General on the Johnson, you finish out the year of his brother, '64, whatever. I'm trying to speed this along, but it's very important. But anyway, I received some info that I had to carry all these years, and this is my last year. I've been begging, you see, life is a journey. You're born, you live a long time, short time, whatever, but I don't want to be somebody's burden. I don't want to be, you know, rest on whatever. I want to leave here standing on my, you know, I want to be proud, you know what I'm saying? I'm proud of this wonderful nation. You see, back in '63, on the 7th of January and '64, I wrote an editorial, and the people in Phoenix, all races and all, Indian race, whatever, it's what we say that means. I've always defended this country. As far as abuse, I've been abused and beat up and whatever, and no one has suffered more than me. There's two people who suffered in this country very badly. One of them was a ballplayer, and his name was Jackie Robinson. He was told, "Jackie, whatever they do with you, you got to take it." He was a gentle man. In this country, I became electrician in the union. In 1958, the Supreme Court passed a thing back in Cleveland, Ohio, and I got into their apprenticeship. I became the first so-called African-American whatever to be independent. And my life was saved at Jones and Lucas Steel Mill by some Italians who wouldn't allow them to take a big truck and crush me. You're not listening. I have friends of every race and nationality in this wonderful nation. My life was saved seven times by different races in this wonderful nation. And African-American, and they'll be called Negro, and I don't know where all people call people nowadays, but what I'm trying to say is that at the end of the day, this wonderful nation has always been my thoughts. I don't get, there's two outfits in this country right now, you can think of, the United States broke every law in the book on me, and the Home Association where I live at right now, they broke a few more of them in the management company, whatever. But what I'm trying to say, I take a lot in this wonderful country because of the freedom that people have a right to do things and say things that is always agreeable or whatever. And I don't mind the abuse because it's a part of the great structure of a great nation. Freedom means just that, we're free. And I wrote Ronald Johnson in '64, and I told him, I'll give you all of this. What I'm really trying to say is that when I found out what was going on, and I begged Robert, I begged him, I got a lot of things to prove it, y'all. I even told Jackie and Kennedy, "Three weeks after the husband died, don't never let that man break." The boy ran and got killed, and I know why, and I can't take it to the grave. It involves a former president of the United States who was also dead, named Richard Milhouse Nixon. That man couldn't stand the Kennedys. They always got in his way when it comes to get elected. In 1960, he had elected when he banned those civil rights bills. That man would have crushed it. And so when Kennedy got elected, what I'm trying to say, destiny takes its own course. Sometimes we try to change destiny, but we can't. And that's what I'm trying to say now. All you think, all these rights and bills people talking about, is that destiny controls everything. And this, I'm going to give it to you, and I remember when Wester said assassination of a president, y'all really got to say, at the clean dealer in July of '62, and I came out west in...
Okay, I have to wrap you up.
Yeah, okay. In December of '60, in December, I came out west in '62, and I've been out here ever since. What I'm really saying is that this is a, I love this great nation, and I don't care about all the different things. They only say when something bad happens in this country, they want to tear down, let me tell you, there's more brutal and horrible crimes and genocide or whatever happened in other parts of the world, and the funeral thing that we have in this country every now and then, they blow it up in the paper, and it's blew it all over the place, and that's not the name of the game. But anyway, I'm going to give you all the papers.
All right, thank you.
But I want to let you know that I love this country. At the end of the day, I've always defended this nation, and all my papers will prove that, because it's going to be, you know, my life still is going to be written, whatever. I can't handle it anymore. I won't be coming back, and I'm going somewhere in the spring, start getting a little small town, and hope I'll be forgotten until I do kick over.
Well, you're not going to be forgotten, but thank you very much. If you leave us, you'd like us to see what the clerk would have...
No, no, this you can have. I have one thing I have to do. I get a candidate airs, and by the way, the candidate type thing, who's going to be president and all that, that's not my thing. It doesn't matter who's in the White House, but it doesn't matter who's in your house, and it also matters in this great nation that Congress...
Okay, I gave you double time.
All right, all right. I'll take the double time. That's another thing I'll say.
That was a birthday.
This is the end of the line.
Birthday present.
Whatever.
It's a birthday present.
All right, thanks for the birthday thing, but anyway, I'll give you this. This, maybe you want to put on the screen for people. This is British. Put that in the rest of it, I can give you that.
Front page is the history. Yeah, it's on? It's all right.
Bring it down, bring it on down.
Okay, but I have to let Mr. Russell speak.
Well, Mr. Russell, can you wait one half second, please?
Well, he's waited. No, you're taking advantage of us.
All right, okay, now, take copies of these, please, and this is for y'all. And this is for y'all, too.
All right, thank you, and happy birthday.
Okay, and I'm sorry about ruining your day or whatever.
You don't ruin my day.
But you need to know...
I'm trying to be courteous to other people.
Well, I appreciate the courtesy, but that's another thing. When I come down, you hundreds of millions of people want me, so I said, why you have to be a little lean, because when I come down, I don't be playing no games. I tell you all the truth and nothing but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I wait for my copies, and I throw myself out like I used to say at the cabinet. Thank you.
Russell?
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Council. My name is Teddy Russell, resident of Las Vegas. This will come as no surprise to anyone because I've made it known in various ways. I am fully back on board with our great City Planning Commission, and I intimated to the gentleman who is doing the World Jewelry Center that I wanted prevailing wages or majority union contracts or both. Of course, he was not at a stage in his development where he was able to give a warrant or an answer to that. I said, "I know, but I'm just putting that be in your bonnet," to which, which is to say, what does prevailing wages of Clark County have to do with the city of Las Vegas? What is right there is right here, too. You can go to 309 South Ninth Street and right at the lobby of the building, the Law Library, the Public Defender, the constables. The building is too small, but it gives the exact placard of the county commission, and it goes so far as to detail an hourly rate schedule. Imagine, a taker in the construction business gets $39.85. If it's right for them, it's right for city of Las Vegas. To wit, in all future projects that employ more than 50 workers, I will demand prevailing wages, majority union contractors, or both, or there will not be my support. I don't care who is building what, so it's a great day for Las Vegas. Mr. Russell dined the elegant, super-exclusive El Cortez. You'll need to take copious notes. We had asparagus, prime rib, horseradish, french fries with ketchup, and Tabasco sauce. We used the butter for our asparagus. I can't thank you enough for treating me like I was the 51st president of the United States. It's just been so, so very grand, and I won't be able to sleep with you this afternoon because guaranteed, after a lunch like that, I certainly would. I get some of my best quality rest when I'm sleeping at these meetings. So I want to thank you for everything and have a great day. We're shutting down in record time, and it's all about me. No, just kidding. Thank you so much.
Hey, anybody else?